Good evening, I call the June 8th Board Education Meeting to order. I would just ask you to be pleased to turn off your phones to vibrate and then ask everyone to stand in the public room. And as our first item on the agenda is the administration of oath to our newest board member, so I'm going to ask Jeanette and Jonah to approach the podium to the administration of oath.
I, Jonah Rizzo-Blackman, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of Eastchester School of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. All right, any board committee reports? All right, we're going to go to superintendent's report, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Glass.
Evening, everyone. It is truly a pleasure to welcome you all tonight to this wonderful evening of celebration of our tenure recipients of 2020. The SAD COVID was able to delay our recognition ceremony for these amazing individuals who are being recognized this evening, but COVID could not deprive them of achieving tenure, through and out of achieving a milestone in their careers, something they earned through hard work, perseverance, and dedicated selfless service. I want to especially welcome the family members and friends who've joined each of our esteemed colleagues to personally celebrate this achievement tonight. We're delighted you're here, we feel so fortunate that we're able to gather in person finally, even if it's a little bit delayed, more than a little bit delayed, and even in this adjusted format. To us, those who are being honored here, you know, their friends, esteemed colleagues, but to the many family members who are here tonight, our honorees are more than that, their spouses, their parents, sons, daughters, siblings, cousins, we acknowledge how an achievement like this holds such a personal meaning for you, and I hope you'll make sure you take it all in tonight, it's a special night. In the academic world, achieving tenure is about so much more than performing adverbially in your profession, you know, for a certain number of years. Tenure is conferred upon individuals who consistently set a high standard for integrity and professionalism. They set an example that elevates the learning in the classroom, inspires the best in the colleagues who serve beside them, their lifelong learners, their peer leaders, and they uphold the highest ideals of both the profession and this organization. They help set a tone and a standard that will help ensure the quality of the Eastchester School District for years to come. So tonight, we honor each of our tenure recipients as heroes of the profession and heroes within the Eastchester School District. I hope everyone here feels as privileged as I do to be celebrating these amazing educators, and I invite all of you to appreciate with me some personal words that will be shared tonight by those who are recommending each candidate. What do you say we take it off to a big round of applause for all of our tenure recipients? If I'm here, I'm going to stay here and I'm going to be going to get our recognition by recognizing Dr. Nantkeen, who is a district leader here at Ann Hutch School. My distinct pleasure to recognize the educational leader of Ann Hutchinson School, Dr. Nantkeen, receiving tenure as principal with the Eastchester Union Free School District. Dr. Keen has worked with the entire school community and within the Ann Hutch School community to establish a strong, deep commitment to social-emotional learning that permeates the entire school culture, as evidenced by the Ann Hutch Has Heart Program, it's just one example. Through consistent use and application of a common language of heart, the entire community binds together in one accord around these principles which serve under good learning and provide important concepts. Before I go any further, I realize that I have collected to invite Dr. Keen up here, because I'm going to stop to find Dr. Keen. You all should have thrown a paper wand at me yourself then or let me know, but thank you. Dr. Keen, it's a pleasure. So, you know, of course, it's not just this approach to social-emotional learning that is noteworthy here, but rather the way that Dr. Keen leads. She leads with collaboration and consistency as she brings the students and the staff along the pathway. Dr. Keen leads her staff through book studies and other shared learning experiences that are designed to elicit the voices and the thoughts and the opinions of the entire staff, and by approaching things this way, she deepens the sense of shared ownership of the school's vision and focus. And along the way, a culture of mutual respect for various opinions is developed, built, and appreciated. And it takes no time whatsoever to walk through the classrooms within the school and immediately notice the sense of mutual respect, common purpose, and positive candid spirit that Dr. Keen has helped to implicate at Ann Hutch. I love, I would have forgotten the first day that I came to Ann Hutch School for a visit. I had just been hired, and because of that visit, I learned a lot about Dr. Keen, about her values and her leadership style. The student leadership group immediately greeted me and walked me through a complete orientation of Ann Hutchinson School, the Heart Program, their roles and responsibilities, the things they value as students at Ann Hutch. And their PowerPoint presentation was incredibly precise, their clarity and passion for the purpose of their education was strong, and the amount of ownership in the agency that they have been given told me that their principal understands the power of a vision that is jointly developed, jointly owned. There was life, there was passion, there was energy in the voices and in the action of these students, and they have been given the opportunity by a principal who obviously led in this way with her staff and her families as well. And so to me, the hallmark of exceptional leadership is that everyone in the organization is deeply invested in co-creating the experience, they're excited about the journey, and they're clear about those learning outcomes. Dr. Keen, it is my pleasure and my privilege to recognize you for achieving tenure here with Eastchester School District. Congratulations. A real honor of our senior recipients is Dr. Japewano, principal of Eastchester High School. Welcome.
Good evening, this is always an exciting night. Seems like we just did this last month. I'd invite Maria Chulule-Neglia, Tara Fox, Anna Rinaldi, and Joe DeMeo if they come up, please. And Lauren Siego and White Schaefer are not with us tonight, we just wanted to recognize them as well. Just a few words on each of these amazing colleagues. We'll start with Maria. It's a true honor to recommend Ms. Chulule-Neglia for a tenure appointment as a teaching assistant. Maria is an outstanding person and professional, offering the highest care to our most vulnerable and fragile population. As one observes Maria, it's clear that she is a quiet force in the classroom. She is able to confidently and lovingly work one-on-one with her students, as well as instruct large groups. Maria is part of a team in her classroom serving as a co-teacher in most respects. Mr. Joe Hennane, a teacher that she works with, stated that we have a quote "teaching assistant who can do the work of a teacher." Mr. Chris Walpole, another teacher in the building, said that Maria quote "delivers instruction to individuals and groups as well as any teacher." What stands out to me beyond her competence is her kindness. Ms. Chulule-Neglia recently said, quote, "You always treat the students as though they were your own." That's something we all want to strive for in this district. She is cognizant of the trust placed in her by her students' parents, and she works tirelessly to maintain their trust and their high standards. I'm so glad that, albeit a year late, we can honor you and congratulate you for achieving tenure. Congratulations. It's a pleasure to honor Tara Fox this evening for her appointment for tenure as a teacher of English. The first time I met Tara, it was clear that she was a gifted teacher who was knowledgeable, kind, nurturing, and encouraging. Over the past now four years, she has not only confirmed these qualities but surpassed them. As one frequents her classes, a number of observations can be made. Ms. Fox is dedicated to developing creative, thorough, and excellent lessons. As a result, her students are able to wrestle with and understand the canon of literature we deem important for literate students to understand. She also is able to help the students connect the classical works to everyday life, providing relevance and currency. Ms. Fox also has excellent rapport with her students. In each class, the dialogue with her students is rich and personal. She is expressive, attentive, and engaging with each of her students. Her students quickly understand that she is concerned about them personally and invested in their success. This same personal connection is evident in her collegial relationships with members of her department and across departments. Ms. Fox is a true collaborator, as is the evidence in her ability to co-teach with a special education colleague. She also has great professional relationships with her English department colleagues, and it because of her deep knowledge and humble attitude that our curriculum continues to grow and develop further. Congratulations, Tara. I can officially say I am now old because I gave Anna her high school diploma when she graduated from Eastchester. Very old. It is a privilege to recommend or to honor Anna tonight and celebrate her tenure appointment as a teacher of English. As I said, I'm particularly proud of this candidate as she graduated from EHS, and she invests in her alma mater on a daily basis, reflecting the high ideals of her high school. She has a unique and valuable perspective, able to meld both her previous teaching experiences with her historical connection to Eastchester. Ms. Rinaldi's lessons are tremendously organized and well-conceived, her materials always excellent, her assignments creative, and her activities highly interactive. Each lesson evidences great thought and planning. As a result, her students are ultra-engaged and willing to contribute. On the occasional day when students may be a little bit less motivated, Ms. Rinaldi is unthwarted, finding ways to draw students into conversation, engagement, and consequent learning. While we're commending Anna for her work in the context of the school year, it's important to note where she really shines. Eastchester Summer School. During that time, she teaches students who have either had academic or motivational issues. Her patience, kindness, and tenacious belief in her students help them experience levels of success previously unknown. I am glad tonight that we can honor you and celebrate you for earning tenure last year. Congratulations. The last honoree this evening is Mr. Joe DeMeo, the assistant principal of Eastchester High School. Before the evening started, I went up to his daughter who was in sixth grade, and I asked her, "Do you know who runs the high school?" And she said, "Is that a trick question?" And I said, "Well, no, not really. The principal goes to lots of meetings. The assistant principals run the high school. If I was out for a week or two, people wouldn't notice. If Joe was out for a day, people notice." I'd like to speak tonight about his confidence, his consistency, his fairness, and his kindness, all of which are key elements to our success at Eastchester High School. Joe's confidence as an educational administrator is of great value to our school. As the administrator overseeing the student management system, Mr. DeMeo has proven himself outstandingly adept in areas related to scheduling, test coordination, and braided attendance recording. While these foundational activities are tremendously important to the excellent functioning of any school, the way in which he has navigated the challenges of our unique high school and testing schedule is of particular note. He has met these difficulties with focus, discernment, and determination. We're in good hands as Mr. DeMeo's skill and conscientiousness and sort ensure that these tasks are not just managed, but managed well. Building a high school schedule for 1,020 odd students is no light feat, and our desire is to give our students every class that they need and require. And desire is because of his work that we're actually able to do that, and that's to be commended. Mr. DeMeo is also appreciated for his consistency. Whether dealing with a student concern, a disciplinary issue, or a staff problem, Joe always constantly attempts to solve problems with thoroughness, calmness, and a steady hand. He quietly works, never seeking accolades, while striving to complete each task with thoroughness and completeness. Mr. DeMeo is also recognized for his level of fairness. When establishing a positive environment within our school, all students are treated with equanimity and respect. While he owns students to a high behavioral standard, he uses every opportunity to teach young men and women how to grow as people of character. Lastly, Mr. DeMeo, while striking the appropriate tone in the building to encourage learning, he is also known for his kindness. Joe intentionally efforts to attend any sporting or artistic events. He even volunteers to shepherd on an annual baseball trip during spring break. This allows the students to see him as an encourager and supporter of their endeavors. It is also through these events and interactions that Joe strategically forged his relationships with our students and can support them as they grow as individuals. Joe also quietly meets the unspoken needs of our students. There have been numerous times where there's been a student in need, be it financially or familiarly, and when it's brought to Joe's attention, he works with other people to make sure that those needs are met, that their holidays are not bleak or wanting, quietly working to make sure the kids in our school and our community are cared for. Again, this occurs without fanfare or a desire for attention. I'm proud to be able to talk about Joe this evening. I'm more grateful that he's a friend and colleague, and I'm glad we're going to be able to work together for years to come. Congratulations. I'd love to welcome Mr. Josh Duller at this time.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call Mr. Joseph Uchek down, please. Before I begin, I'd like to mention that there are two individuals who are not able to be here tonight, Ms. Caitlin O'Learyna, orchestra teacher, and Ms. Agnes O'Brien, teaching assistant. Each of these individuals is well-deserving of this achievement and continues to be advocates for their students. Please join me in a round of applause acknowledging their dedication to the students of Eastchester Middle School. It is my pleasure to acknowledge Mr. Joseph Uchek's tenure appointment as a physical education teacher in the Eastchester Union Free School District. Throughout Mr. Uchek's probationary period, he has been a transformational teacher at Eastchester Middle School. He has made substantial contributions in how physical education is delivered to students, helping to design a program which targets students' individual needs in an engaging, interactive, and high-intensity and excitement classroom environment. At the core of this program is a teacher who is passionate of the subject matter and equally passionate in helping students to be successful in this classroom. Mr. Uchek's ethical standards and sense of professionalism are highly developed, showing perceptive views and reflection to improve student learning, creating effective systems of communicating with parent parents, and assuming leadership roles within the Eastchester Middle School learning community. He is not only an integral part of our physical education department, but in our school community as a whole. I'm honored to recognize Mr. Uchek's tenure as a physical education teacher. I have full confidence that he will continue to be an advocate for the students of Eastchester Middle School for the duration of his career. Mr. Joseph Uchek.
Time to turn it back over to lead, Dr. Glass. Dr. Keen next.
I believe Dr. Keen is.
Yes.
Dr. Keen, would you please, um, join us in the public room? Thank you.
Hey, yes, certainly applaud.
Good evening. It is my great pleasure to invite Lisa Cilione and Loriann DiNacchio to the podium. Let's give them a big round of applause. So it is my pleasure to recommend Lisa Cilione for a tenure appointment as a teacher in Eastchester Schools. I have had the privilege of working with Lisa since September 2016 in her role as an AIS teacher at Ann Hutchinson School. Lisa brought extensive knowledge and experience in the area of academic intervention services to Ann Hutch. Strategically using proven instructional resources and strategies, she effectively meets the needs of striving readers and mathematicians in grades two and three and pushes them to the next developmental level. In addition, Mrs. Cilione has been instrumental in bolstering our school's approach to response to intervention and a multi-tiered system of supports. She has led the way in improving our protocols and procedures for student screening and benchmarking, and she has implemented important structures to ensure classroom teachers have protected time to collaborate with AIS teachers toward the goal of accelerating student progress. Lisa's cheerful demeanor, strong learning stance, and willingness to help others make her an asset to our school district and a natural fit for Ann Hutchinson School. Her professional insights and guidance are sought out and greatly valued by her colleagues, including me. She is also a critical member of the Social-Emotional Learning Committee and has played an important role in implementing the Ann Hutch Has Heart Program at our school. I guess we should be just complaining. Lisa brought the Ann Hutch Has Heart Program to Ann Hutchinson School. I am confident that Lisa Cilione will continue to play a leading role in ensuring our school and our students meet and exceed the high expectations of our community. Congratulations, Lisa. It is also my great pleasure to recommend Loriann DiNacchio for a tenure appointment as a teacher in Eastchester Schools. I have had the privilege of working with Loriann in her role as the ENL teacher at Ann Hutch since September 2016 as well. Loriann is a thoughtful and caring educator who builds incredible bonds with her students and their families. She tirelessly works to build and revise an ENL curriculum that is consistently responsive and relevant to her students and their language proficiency levels. In addition, she diligently plans lessons to meet the needs of all her students and provides the scaffolding necessary for students to meet her very high expectations for English language development. Loriann embodies what it means to be a teacher leader. She eagerly seeks out professional development opportunities and consumes new research in the field to continuously enhance her own practice. She also welcomes new challenges and more responsibility. For example, she served as our school's testing coordinator for the last four years, and she's also a valued member of our school's Social-Emotional Learning Committee. In the role of the ENL teacher, collaboration with the classroom teacher is so critical to student success, and Loriann's warmth and intelligence make her naturally collegial. It is clear that the strong relationships she builds with faculty well support ENL teaching and learning throughout the day at Ann Hutchinson School. I am so grateful to work with such a gifted professional as Loriann DiNacchio, and I look forward to our continued work together. Congratulations, Loriann.
Wow, how inspirational. Everything that you heard shared tonight is really just a fraction, just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much rich stuff that we can honor, but you just got a snapshot of it tonight. I'd like to, once again, congratulate everyone here tonight who's been honored, who've received tenure, I'd like to thank everyone who's come out to honor them, and families, you should be very proud. Let's give them all one round of applause.
So the advantage of just having been delayed for us as board members is we got to do this twice in a relatively short period of time, because I have to tell you, this is one of our most joyful nights as board members, and it's also one of the most important nights, where we get to recognize the future of our district, because all of you will affect many lives over your years that you work for this district. And the granting of tenure is our faith and confidence in the ability that you've demonstrated and the ability that you will bring to the task. So congratulations. It is very proud to be able to look at all of the names, and they were names that we didn't mention tonight only because they're not here, but there were others that also got tenure, and I want to recognize them as well. But congratulations, it is truly an honor to recognize you for having received tenure. It's a great life.
With that, I believe we'll take a short recess. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We'll take a short recess, allow our guests to mingle for a moment, and then we'll resume the agenda aboard shortly. Thank you very much.
All right, so we're now going to move on to the regular agenda. No, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted on my computer.
Oh, I did.
Okay, no worries. All right, so we're going to move on to the regular portion of the agenda, and Steve, do you want to do six through... I guess six through 10, right?
I move that we approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Annual budget vote and trust the election. I move that we approve the minutes for the June 1st, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following health services contract as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following warrants as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the student nursing agreement with Iona College. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following donation. $19,500 donation from the Waverly PTA for the playground project, which includes the purchase and installation of playground turf and the installation of a play structure at the Waverly Elementary School. And $461.39 donation from the Waverly PTA for miscellaneous items for first grade moving up to seventh grade. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with the Takahoe Youth Association, Eastchester Little League, and Maroon Landscaping, Inc. for the improvement of baseball and softball infield at Ann Hutchinson School as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the athletic trainer support agreement with the New York Presbyterian for the 2021 to 22 school year as attached. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves proposal from Mesgrazi Mercedes Architecture Engineering, P L L C, DBA Mimasi, for architectural and engineering services for the Eastchester Middle School partial roof replacement and gymnasium renovation project at a cost of $161,500. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the licensing and operating agreement with the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester for the provision of childcare services in district buildings for the term of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion, Joe?
I had a question about the agreement with the Eastchester Little League. Actually, I hadn't noticed that on the agenda it says between Eastchester Little League, Takahoe Youth Association, and landscaping. We approved this contract or a similar contract in the March 9th meeting, which did include Takahoe Youth. I think this contract removes Takahoe Youth Association. That's one of the differences I saw. At least from the heading, the title, I didn't see mention of it. And I wanted clarification on the differences between the March 9th agreement and this agreement. Thanks.
I didn't need to follow the contract memorandum agreement.
So my understanding is that they were identical agreements. So are you saying that in the March 9th one, Takahoe wasn't mentioned?
Takahoe was mentioned.
Right, and this one it's not?
It's not.
They took it out, okay.
This one only mentions P L L.
Okay. All right, so I may just have to amend the resolution that we take Takahoe out of it. Because Eastchester Little League modified this contract, so that must have been their intent to take Takahoe out. I'll follow up with that.
You're not sure, Gata? I believe TYA and Eastchester Little League are the same entity, so it probably has something to do with their legal status for signing these agreements. Okay? Because Pony Cult League, Eastchester Little League, and TYA are all really the same organization at this point. I don't know how they're registered publicly or any insured or any of that stuff. But I'm sure that's the reason that the name is different. It's the same group.
That's helpful clarification, because it looked very, this memorandum agreement looks very similar.
It's the same group.
The other guy just found the other one, and it was.
I guess it's how they legally define themselves. It's changed. I don't know.
That's helpful clarification.
All right, any other questions, Joe? Do you know?
I'd just like to ask Lisa to say a word or two on the Iona College Agreement, the Nursing Agreement. I was going to ask on the Baseball Agreement, but we've talked about that already. And the Trainer Agreement and the YMCA Agreement. You could just give just a two-sentence summary of what they are from public.
So for the Student Nursing Agreement, actually, that was something that Noreen had worked out. An agreement with Iona College to have their student nurses do some of their work here in our district. We do have a shortage of nurses in our district. We have a lot of turnover, it's difficult to get substitutes. So Noreen thought it might be a good idea if we tap into the local colleges and see if we could, you know, come up with an agreement where it would help us as having extra hands in the nursing office, as well as giving nursing students experience. And I don't know if Noreen wants to add anything additional.
Sure, we currently have three nurses working. Hi, so currently we have three nurses, student nurses, working at the elementary level. This is part of Iona's community rotation. So it's really been a great opportunity for the nurses to be able to come into the district, gain experience with young students in the school setting. And so it's really been a win-win for both of us. They've been working in the nurses' offices with the students, also with the surveillance testing. So they've been part of that as well. So it's a really great opportunity, we're looking forward to continuing that next year. And it's just a semester rotation, because it's part of their community program, but they may incorporate it next year into their pediatric rotation as well, so.
I hate to correct anybody, but you both left out the best part. It just doesn't cost us anything. Okay? So we benefit, and they benefit. Thank you.
So the Athlete Trainer Agreement, this is something we undergo every year with New Presbyterian. They provide an athletic trainer for sporting events. It's a $25,000 a year cost. And the contract for the sport seasons fall through the spring. So that's something we do every year. And then finally, the last one is the Licensing and Operating Agreement. We are very excited about this. This is an agreement with the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester, where they have agreed to operate a program at each of our elementary schools for next year. AM childcare, PM childcare, from 7:00 AM till 6:30 PM. Once we execute this agreement, registration, they should be able to open registration probably in the next week or two. This is a service that we heard from the community was very much in need. A lot of local childcare facilities have closed down. The EASY program was not going to reopen at the Ann Hutch School. So we were in search of a new childcare provider, and we were lucky to find them. And they are thrilled and excited to be starting this program. And we've heard from many parents and families that they are also excited as well. So we're really pleased with this agreement, so.
Juna, I'm just noticing that we're hearing the chat, that the sound has gone out of the Zoom.
It was just Lisa's mic.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the call.
All right, thanks, Susan.
Any other questions or comments, Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the Waverly PTA. They made a pretty substantial contribution there. That's a tough PTA, because parents are pretty transient, a couple of years. And they always seem to do a good job and little additions to the school like that. That's a very nice thing there.
Anybody else? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see what you had. Yes, Joe?
All right, can you hear me? I'd like to make some comments about the personnel agenda, in particular, the extension.
Can you make sure you're unmuted? Don't unmute yourself on the bottom. On the bottom. You'll see, the line goes away, the red line goes away. We hear, we hear you.
I have a few comments to make about the personnel agenda, in particular, the extension of Robert Glass's contract. First off, I think Robert Glass has some great qualities. He's professional.
So I don't mean to interrupt, I promise, I will let you finish if you so choose. To be aware, generally as policy, and I think even as a matter of law, specific personnel doesn't get discussed in public. But I'm not going to stop you from speaking if you so wish.
But it's not public?
If it's part of personnel, generally as.
We're here, they're here, this.
So generally, as far as.
It's right here, it's in print, so.
Why is this? Why is this in the back page?
It's right here.
Let the man speak.
Let the man speak. The new guy. Because honestly, that you guys snuck this in before putting these people.
I don't want to say anything.
No, go ahead, finish. This guy touched you.
This is publicly available on the website already, so that's all I'm going to be talking about.
So, yeah.
So as I was saying, I think Robert Glass has many great qualities. He's professional, hardworking, timely, very responsive and accessible. He's an excellent communicator. And in no way should my comments or vote tonight be taken as a criticism of Rob or his performance. And under different circumstances, I'm very well devoted in his favor with this resolution. However, I have concerns with the timing of this decision to extend his contract and the lack of public debate about such extension. At the recent Board of Education election, my fellow running mates and I went into decisive victory, defeating three incumbents and one other candidate loosely aligned with them. That election represented a mandate from voters, made major changes in the direction and administration of the school district. As executive officer of the school, the superintendent is a critical piece of that direction and administration. In order to allow me and my fellow trustees-elect to implement our mandate, we need to say in who holds that office. Either I or my fellow trustees-elect are consulted or involved in any discussions about the contract extension. And now, the three women who earned the highest number of votes in the last election will have no say in that decision. Further, I am unaware of any outreach to the school's community regarding this decision, and was it even discussed at a prior public meeting? I don't know. I urge the board.
Was not.
I urge the board to both know on this resolution, not because I don't want to renew Robert's contract, but because I want to do it the right way. Let's wait a few weeks until the incoming board has a chance to review all of the considerations, including community reaction, and discuss the decision publicly. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a vote on the motion? All in favor?
Against.
Against?
I agree.
Yeah.
You could ask, you can separate it out.
Okay.
I'll second separating it out.
Okay, so everything but the personnel agenda, all in favor?
All right.
There's a reason.
On the personnel agenda, all in favor?
There's a reason there isn't an election. This is unfair.
The next board.
They ignored this.
The next board needs to vote the extension.
No, big board, oh, you did.
The next board needs to vote the extension. That's why we voted.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, you said us. You don't have. You asked us.
You haven't stopped, no.
You put this in on the last page.
This is not how it works.
This is not how it works tonight.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. You put this on the last page, you didn't survey the parents. His contract expires in August, or I'm sorry.
This is a board meeting. This is a board meeting.
A year from now. I'll leave after this. His extension time is public coming. His contract does not expire for a year.
You approved it, it's a done deal.
There's a reason we voted a new board. We don't want voting for this.
This is not tonight's business.
You're not repaying us. You are not. His contract is not for a year.
I can't believe you.
You're not representing the majority of the people. You're representing 30% of the people, not 90%.
Four people here are, you have four new people, okay? Four new people. Three of these people were basically fired.
Sneaky.
That's for the parents to decide, okay? They went out and they voted.
So that board should decide this.
The fact that you tried to sneak this in all this, as sneakily as you did, is disgusting.
And that's why you're voting against us.
It's wrong.
You're done, you're out. You're out of your head. You have no say.
I can't believe it.
You have no say. You're telling us.
Guys, we know.
You should put your head up.
Who reinstated contract a year early? Come on.
Who does that?
He's only done two-thirds of his time. Let him through himself, then we'll decide, but then the board. It's not complicated, people. My word.
You didn't assume that. I'm pretty certain. It's all right. They're trying to. We're trying to contract a week.
She's really just joking. You didn't mind my. That is all I can do. Excuse me.
You didn't waste your time. You're breaking your breath.
Excuse me, the Zoom meeting is not muted. You can't be heard. You can't be heard because you're not at the guest speaker podium. You could be heard on the Zoom meeting, but you need to speak from that device. You're doing. You're not being heard on Zoom because you're not in the mic. You're supposed to look out for the parents, the community members, and the children. And where are the parents of those children?
The children.
We voted a couple of weeks ago, and those members should vote on this contract.
Exactly.
That's it.
Exactly. You're still not right here sending us. The majority of the people want them to make the decision, not.
How do you do that? That's like. Move the goalposts in the middle of the game as the game is playing.
Sneaky, sneaky and disgusting.
I saw who raised their hands. I saw. You know what, most of them were on their way out anyway.
And the other ones, not.
Trust me, actually, you'll be out too.
Because the parents are aware, the parents are now aware of what's going on. The parents used to not be in the know, now we're going to be in the know about everything. We are going to be in the know about everything. Anyway, we're going to know everything that's going on.
So do we get the official vote? I'm not sure that we actually got the official vote. So I'm calling them all in favor.
All right.
Against? One, and it's not, everyone says no extensions. Thank you. All right, the other business.
Thanks for listening to us sellouts. Disgusting.
You're disgusting, honestly.
The other business is a people of the meeting today.
Shame on you.
Come on, you guys, you can gals.
The next meeting is.
You can't waste too much money to not have our voices heard. That's a cost.
And that's what I'm saying, that all we don't work for you. You have a pretty powerful position over here when you stand here and you vote on something and you undermine the people that are coming in, when the people voted for these people.
You didn't survey the parents. You didn't survey the parents.
No, 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 no. You're a team, you're a team. This is a election. I don't refuse to listen to it.
You don't make work to me. You're a lawyer, is this legal, what you're doing?
Yeah. We could survey for months of it, but we didn't survey without standing up contract. That's not, that's a survey. This is our children, we will add them to our plan again. We are Eastchester. You're a step up. We vote in who we want in, and you guys are out.
The contract is up next April. How about surveying the parents?
Yeah, exactly.
Getting our input.
What are you afraid of?
Let the board decide.
What are you afraid of?
When Dr. Glass performs his duty, he'll be evaluating.
Standing up is never, this isn't right. This is on you. You should stand up and say, this, what you're doing is not right. Are you strong enough to do that? Are you strong enough to do that? This is a reflection of who you are, and this is why we're. What are you having, you guys are, this is our action, be yours. You should stand up and say, this is not right.
They don't care about what's right. They care about just what they want to do.
So I would say it's now time for comments from the public, so if you'd like to approach the mic.
Give me a break, you guys are a joke. Give me a break, you guys are a joke. Let's get out of here.
Is that, uh, Chris, Christian, is that one on the, uh, press ready?
What's up?
Hi.
I want to make sure we get
Yeah, E F S D tab.
That's, no, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Chris?
I'm here in support of Dr. Robert Glass. My name is Amanda Hobart Forcenito, and I have a six-year-old daughter at Waverly. Last year, we had to decide whether or not to send our daughter to in-person school, just like all of you here. It was the most difficult week I've ever had. Never in my life have I feared for my daughter's safety. I worried about the pandemic and feared for my daughter's physical health, but I also had to balance that with concerns about her mental health. In the end, my husband and I opted for the hybrid model. The reason we did so was almost solely because of our confidence in Dr. Robert Glass. The plans put in place for reentry put our hearts at ease. They also made us feel that the district had our daughter's health and safety as their number one priority. Remember that there was no vaccine last fall, only the non-medical mitigation efforts. Dr. Glass and the district put strong safety measures in place, measures that kept our children safe. The proof is in the pudding. I had friends in other districts who went in and out of quarantines all year long, creating not only a health scare, but a logistical nightmare for working parents. That wasn't the case for my daughter. She had one school-wide quarantine this year, and rem- and that was the consistency that we needed for our lives. This was no easy feat. Remember that this all came as COVID cases hit record levels across the country in the winter. In addition to the reentry plan, we were reassured by Dr. Glass's constant communication and candor. There was a consist- constantly updating website and FAQs, many, many information sessions in the falls, organized by topic, by school, I can't even keep track of them, to make sure that parents had plenty of opportunity to have their questions answered. I've seen other districts with just a single, non-interactive website for their reentry plans. Dr. Glass did the opposite. Then after school began, he took questions at the PTA meetings, the virtual coffee sessions. I listened to every single one of them this year, including the board meetings. To me, it was clear that Dr. Glass listened to people, considered all opinions, and explained in a very clear way what went into the group's decision-making. Finally, our daughter's teacher exceeded our expectations. We experienced lively, customized live streams, during which the teacher spoke directly to the kids at home, addressing them, showing them a prepared PowerPoint that coincided with what children in school were seeing. There was small group reading instruction. Our teachers sent schedules every week to keep us on track at home and recorded videos to explain new things to us. Is this how education should be? Absolutely not. But I believe my daughter's education did not suffer during this pandemic. Last October Last October, do not interrupt me. Last October, I wrote an email to Dr. Glass and this board saying how heart-wrenching it was to decide to send my daughter to school. But that two
Don't even interrupt. Especially after Mary Doyle trained a security guard.
But that two months in, I did not regret my decision. My daughter bounds out of school with a smile. She asks for a few minutes to run around the field with her new friends. She skips to the car. And yes, she was still able to make new friends despite the mask, social distancing, and a lack of free play, something that I, as an adult, was unsure about. It felt normal, it oddly felt safe. 2020 is our first exposure to the Eastchester Public Schools, and the pandemic has really exposed many of the intricacies of how the district is run. Overall, we've been pleased. There was a plan early on, the community was engaged, informed, and Dr. Glass answered questions openly and honestly. So thank you. And most importantly, thank you for putting my child's safety first. Board members, old, new, and incoming. It would be a detriment to our community to lose Dr. Glass. I implore you to renew his contract.
Sure. Can I see? Is this the line?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, my name's Natalie Viero, and I am here to also thank Dr. Glass. First of all, for understanding that the voice of our community was heard with the election. I think this was the biggest turnout that we've ever had for a Board of Education election, so I commend our new candidates. And Jonah, welcome, and thank you for being one of the parents to stand up. As far as 2020 goes with the pandemic, 2020, as an Eastchester alumni, I love my school, which is why I'm raising my family here. 2020 was the worst year I have ever had in this district. Mary Doyle did an injustice at Waverly by training a security guard, and then behind our backs, the board that is now leaving tenured her in. My daughter came in contact with that man, and now we're entrusting her with the rest of our youngest learners. A lot of things go on behind closed doors, but our eyes are open now, and there is a reason we have a new board. So I would like to thank the new Board of Education for stepping up and doing what we need to do as parents and being our ears and our voices. Thank you for being the biggest advocates for our kids.
Hi. First of all, let's be clear that the board that is currently in their seats now are performing the duties they need to perform. Those duties don't end until they are no longer in their seats. The new board starts when the new board starts. It doesn't end. It doesn't start before they're sitting in their seat. And the new, the board that is sitting here now warrants and deserves the right to weigh in on everything that is before them. You don't get to say, hey, guess what? A couple of people lost the election, and they don't get to, to say now what they were elected to say. Not all of the board was reelected. And this board has served this community, many of them for many, many years, and they have absolutely every right to perform their duties as they pledged to do until they are no longer sitting there. The new board will take over when they Excuse me, I'm speaking.
There's no reason to bring this employment thing right now.
Excuse me?
I agree with what you said.
You're absolutely right.
You're right.
This contract expires under
I don't, that's not, I don't, you know what? Excuse me, I'm speaking. I'm speaking.
We agree with you, except
I don't care whether you agree with me.
Expires under
You, you fail to understand, I don't care. Okay? The reality is that this is on the agenda, that they have created an agenda, that they have performed their duties, and they have every right to do this tonight.
Sneaky.
There's nothing Can you Hello, excuse me. I'm speaking, I have the floor.
Don't speak, I wasn't talking.
No, I, you know what?
I wasn't talking.
I don't care who, I'm looking in that direction.
Please, try to minimize it, you got the president, we'll have a chance
The point is that Dr. Glass, above and beyond the port, point of the board has every right to execute its duties as it sees fit when they are in their positions is period, it's a period. There is no, hey, but we got a new board now, and we could say, we can, no, they should do this. No, they get to make that determination.
We know that you should
Excuse me? Yeah, you know, there, there's no, there's no question why some of the kids act the way they do.
Now you're going first.
You know, you know what? I'm speaking, and you keep interrupting.
Well, don't attack our kids.
I didn't attack, oh my God, I can't.
She's at the podium, let her finish.
I can't hear, I can't hear, I'm
Okay, so she'll be louder, but please don't
If you can't hear me, I'm happy to speak up louder. The point is, these people are doing their duty. They have sworn to uphold what they're supposed to do as board members. And that is what they do. So what they do tonight is, you've got a handful of people here who say, no, let's not vote on Dr. Glass, which is another way of saying, hey, we don't want him to go any further. We, we want to, we want to, you know, throw him out because he didn't do what we wanted him to do and put our kids in five days a week last, last fall, ignore the science, the same set of, okay? This is not the way this runs.
I, I, what are you
So, again
What's science?
Let's, let's be You know what? Either you agree that you follow the rules, or you don't. I'm not going to Either you do it, or you don't.
Or you send your kids to private school.
Excuse me? No, either you follow rules.
Or you go to private school.
I don't know what the private school is. Nobody here is going to a private school. So I, I'm sorry to understa- I'm trying to understand what that means. Because we're all talking about Eastchester Public Schools that we all pay taxes toward. Every single one of us. So we all have a right to speak, and somehow, somehow, people here are suggesting that I don't have a right to speak because I disagree with you. I didn't, I didn't agree with the last woman who just spoke. I didn't say a word. She has every right to speak, as do I. Now, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good.
You're in the media too.
You know, again, this is what Eastchester becomes when you cannot speak.
When the contract doesn't even provide John
Excuse me? What? What did you just say?
That was
Please let people speak and do the agenda.
If you want to talk, I'm going to the podium for your turn, let her finish, please.
Look, Dr. Glass, forget all the other crap. Dr. Glass is an administrator that we all should feel lucky to have. I don't always agree with him, and he can tell you that. We have had many disagreements about certain things. But one thing I know for sure is that he cares about our kids. He cares about their education. He cares about how he conducts himself and what the reputation of our schools is. But most of all, the primary thing he cares about are our kids. I don't for a second ever doubt that, even when we disagree, and we do disagree. And that, to me, in addition to his incredible resume, is more than enough reason to renew his contract. But above and beyond that, the board has every right to do what they're doing tonight, period. And I am going to support them, even again, though I haven't agreed with all of their decisions either. I don't expect people to be perfect. But I also understand their hearts, and the hearts of these board members is really clear. They care about our kids. And they're not operating from a position of politics, they're operating in a position of what they feel is best. And I don't care what their political affiliation is. I see from the way they behave that their kids, what our kids need is what comes first. So I support them. I support their voting on Dr. Glass's renewal of his contract. And the fact is that this is something that is by the book. Nobody's twisting anything, nobody's trying to make something happen that isn't right. It is by the book. Thank you. And I will also give anybody the right to speak and say their piece without interrupting them.
Oh, you're next, you're, sorry. No, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to start with good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Fragley, I live at 115 Park Avenue. I have a high schooler, I have a fifth grader at Greenville. We've lived in Eastchester since 2009, so I'm definitely not a newbie. And I do support Dr. Glass being our superintendent again. I'm also a teacher in a neighboring district, high performing, and I've worked with eight different superintendents. And I have to tell you that Dr. Glass is a class act. And I agree, I haven't always agreed with Dr. Glass. However, he's always had his rationale, he's always taken time to explain it to me. He's always had our children's interest at heart. But why I'm really here tonight is because I don't want this new normal in Eastchester to continue. An election happens, people voted. We are still in Eastchester community, yelling at elected officials, yelling at speakers. Please, please come up, I'll offer this gentleman if he'd like to go first. We need our decorum back. We are neighbors, our children play on playing fields together, our children in school together. What example are we setting for them? We're not always going to agree, that's okay, that's America. We need to take our differences and come to consensus. I support anyone who volunteers and gives of themselves. I know it's a thankless job. I know you get phone calls and emails. Let's remember that when we're addressing each other. Let's remember that we are better, we are Eastchester. Thank you.
Well said. Is this on?
Yeah.
I'm Chris Johnson, I'm a resident here. I know being on the board is a thankless job. I know you have to make a lot of decisions, you put a lot of time into this. Teachers are our greatest asset. I know Dr. Glass works hard. Here's my concern, is this renewal was submitted just what today, yesterday, kind of slid under the door real quick, and it does not expire until April of 2022, a year from now. So who renews a contract a year early? It's a three-year contract, why would you renew it at two years? My personal opinion is, the board that was voted in should vote on this, since this expires under the new board's reign. Also, expect a lot more parent involvement at these meetings. We're going to hold ourselves accountable, and we're going to hold the school board accountable. We expect you to perform decisions for the parents and in the best interest of the students. And we did not get a survey for this renewal. You would think you would want to get the parents' input, right? Before we renew a superintendent's contract? Nothing. So it's disappointing. I'm on.
Hi, Amanda Keller, 66 Stratford. Actually, my husband and I were listening from home, and we're really upset by what we heard and actually told our children, we'll be back, we have something to do, and we had to come down. You know, it's been a hard couple of years, and it's been a hard couple of years to not necessarily have the same opinion as people who were more vocal, as people who were a little bit more negative. I, I just want to start by thanking the teachers, thanking Dr. Glass. From where we were in March, when this all went down in 2020, to where we opened in September, even just from a technology perspective, the ability for the classes to continue in livestream without breaking down, I mean, we were incredibly impressed. We know that not every child succeeded, but I do think that it's important to bring up a few success stories, and my girls were two of those. They gained independence, they gained the understanding that things are going to go wrong in life, and you are going to have to adapt to them. My middle schooler started sixth grade My middle schooler started sixth grade under the toughest of circumstances and rose to the challenge in ways that made her proud. And that was very important to me. I also, because I'm kind of a loud mouth at these board meetings often, and I tried to just stay out of them because I was so thrilled to see other people come forward and stand here and bring up their ideas and concepts, even if they weren't my own, I'm thrilled to see more community involvement. That being said, I wish it was more respectful. And I wish people didn't feel as if they had to remain quiet or agree. Because there was a large contingency of the community that really felt like they didn't have a voice to speak up. Because if they didn't say that they hated everything the district was doing, then they were somehow blackballed from the community. And I can tell you that by the barrage of text messages I got, asking whether I was at the meeting, if I was willing to stand up and say something on behalf of Dr. Glass, on behalf of the district. And that is why, you know, we got in the car. We would like to stand in support of Dr. Glass. We've been thrilled with the job that he's done. And when this pandemic is over and there actually is an opportunity for this administration to do all the things that they set out to do, that's really what I look forward to. I'm not so engaged in the misery that is now. I'm much more looking forward to five years from now, strategic planning for better curriculum. More, you know, more for the teachers, more interaction for the teachers to get professional development, better technology for the children, a guidance department that's going to get the kids into better and better colleges. Something that's just going to bring this district forward to be everything that we all know that it can be. So I thank you for your time. I thank everyone for remaining quiet while I said that much. I will tell you, I'm not here just for myself. I'm here on behalf of a lot of parents who feel this and feel that they have not had a voice to be able to lend support. But here is as much as I can give. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bobby Marn, 213 Lincoln Place. Many of the board members might know me because my mom was president of the board for a little while and has been on the board or was on the board for years. She is Mary Messner Marn. I just want to say, I think the board is doing a fantastic job. I know how much it takes out of your lives to be here and how much of a thankless job it could be. My mom spent hours and hours working not only full-time, being a mother, but being on the board to help serve the community that she loves so much. And I know how much each of you give into this community. And it's a shame to see what is being given back to you. And I know I haven't always agreed with the board. I have brought masses of high schoolers to come and kind of debate with the board at times. But I will say, the fact that I've seen a whole bunch of high schoolers be much more respectful than some adults here is a little disappointing in the community I'm seeing right now. As someone who is now paying taxes, as someone who has gone through the school system and is now wanting to see the younger generation grow up and grow on the same path I did and get all the advantages I did, I want us to come together as one. And the fact that I see people screaming at you guys for doing what you think is best and what I believe is best for the students and their health is disappointing to see. It divides the community much more than it needs to be. We should be coming together as one to help the students. This is not about us. This is about the kids that are growing up. Then please be respectful to them. Shouting doesn't give them the right way to go. It doesn't show them how they need to grow up, how they need to be disciplined. Coming in and yelling at these people just because you want to is not the way to go. There's a better way to do this. The election is a great way to show, if you want your voice heard, go out, vote, talk to people. Screaming at meetings is not the way to do it. Thank you for speaking up. You can come up. You are very welcome to come up. I have filmed enough of these meetings to know if you ever want to talk at a board meeting, you could come right up and say what you like. No matter how little the board might want to hear it, you can come up and say everything you like. But there's a time and place for it. Screaming in the middle of the room trying to do business is not the way to do it. That's not the way to show your students how to act. If your kid came in here and started screaming at the top of their lungs while all these lovely people are giving up their free time to be here, were trying to do business to help better the community, you'd be disappointed in them. And why is it different for you?
Why are you talking to me?
I'm just this area. The way, the area where the screaming is coming from.
You did a voice on this contract, that's why we're loud.
And you saw it, you could come up and talk to the mic. Screaming is not the way to go. I want to say, I'm very proud of the board. I think you did a great job. As someone who graduated into the pandemic, I can see what it's like for a university to fail and not know how to do things right, how to flounder. And I think you guys helped, you did this in such a way that students still got their education. It wasn't the same as before, but it was much better than any alternative that we've seen in other districts. And I just want to say, as someone who knows what it's like to have a parent on the board and the amount of time they spent on it, I thank you guys for your duty. Thank you very much.
Hello, my, my name's Sean Bolduc. I live over on 14 Myrtle and I've gotten the opportunity to watch everything that went on today. And I want to agree with a lot of people here. This past year and a half has been terrible. I think we can all agree with that, right? The one thing that's been very difficult is every decision has come at a cost. The one thing that has been a staple throughout this since March is that when every decision was made, tough as it was, hard as it was, Dr. Glass stood up every time along with the board and at least tried to explain their positions. A lot of other school districts said they went full-time. And they did so with the elementary schools and they sacrificed the adults. Now, I have little kids, so if I was in some of those school districts, I would have gotten my kids to go five days a week. But my high, but the high schoolers would have sat at home and rotted. Dr. Glass made an incredibly tough decision, knowing that half the community was going to turn on him. And he did it because he believed in the community, just like we all do. There's such passion, it's amazing. I moved into this community because of the passion, all against and for. We all want the best for everybody. We have a community and we're in triage right now because of this pandemic. And he's been here through two crises, one after another. And he didn't cower. He stood up, he stood with, and he at least acknowledged it. And he acknowledged he didn't always get it right, but he was willing to adjust and adapt and move forward. That's what's beautiful about this community. We can't forget that. And I hope that regardless of how this all settles, we remember who we all are and why this community, why our property values are so high. Because people want to come to this community, because the education is phenomenal. The people are phenomenal, whether I agree with any of you or all of you. It's amazing. So I hope that we walk away from this, we continue to be strong. And don't turn on each other, but realize that we have more in common than we do against. You're right, this all sucks, all of it. But let's remember who stood there. He's not from New York. He's not even from New York. He stayed and he's now, to me, you're a New Yorker, you're a, you're an Eastchester guy. But let's not forget who we are. We're all, we're all not from originally here. He adapted. We can too. We need to forgive and move forward. And you know what? We have new, we do have new people voted in. I didn't necessarily vote for all of them, but I believe and trust you're going to put your best foot forward for the community. And I hope and I look forward to seeing what you're going to do moving forward. So please, I implore you all to remember why we are a strong community. And with that, I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
What am I doing? Hi, good evening. My name is Suzanne Johnson, 14 Innisfree Place. I've been in the district for about 18 years. There's a lot of confusion tonight, so I have a question for the board. Can they respond if I ask? Anyone? So the question is, what bylaw gives this board authority at this point in time to renew a contract that doesn't expire until 2022? Is there a bylaw that we can look up?
I'm not going to go ahead and, I'm not going to go back and forth on it because that's not how public comment works. However, this is something that boards have done in the past with many superintendents. It is something generally have done for every superintendent since I've been on the board. It's not a matter of a bylaw specifically. It's that the board that is currently elected is still in power to act. These are decisions that were commenced and contemplated before any election because of the issues involved. It is, just like the hiring of a superintendent is not a matter of public surveying, similar is the contract. And generally, that's why you won't hear us generally complaining because it is not proper for a board to be discussing specific personnel in public.
So.
But that is generally, I don't believe there's a specific bylaw because the board is in power to act by what is exactly.
So the board normally acts without input from the community? Is that, is that, because that's, I think that's what's creating a lot of confusion was this wasn't expected on the agenda. And then it seems to be a last-minute thing where one board is leaving and a new board's coming in and it was decided to throw this in. So that's, that's, that's the issue really for, you know, for the people who have been upset tonight because we feel this has been underhanded and deceitful. That, you know, it hasn't been discussed, it hasn't been, you know, the community made a decision at the last vote on what they wanted. And it seems like this board is trying to undermine that. So that's, that's what this is about. This is not about dividing the community or trying to be rude to each other because, you know, we're all living here together. Every board member, every teacher, every student's parent. We all share this very small space in the world. And we love this town. So, you know, I hope everyone who feels that people have been upset, they understand why. This is the reason why. It has nothing to do with whether we like Dr. Glass or we disagree with him or anything like that. This is just, we just feel like this is an underhanded move by the board to insert themselves in a situation where they really shouldn't. So that's, that's what this is about. I hope, I hope we can rectify this because going forward, it's going to be very difficult to work together as a community if, you know, we can't be fair with each other. And I think it would have been fair if there was more discussion on the personnel issue, especially the superintendent. Because I remember the last time we chose Dr. Glass, there was a survey that was sent out. And we all answered what kind of superintendent we wanted and what we were looking forward to in having a new superintendent. So I was just surprised that that was not done this time. Unless I missed it. Was there a survey? Does anyone know? Because I missed it then.
So, you know, Dr. Moran, before Dr. Glass, was renewed both at the time?
Right.
There was no survey then for Dr. Moran either. That's not the process. We did a survey during the search process to find out what the community wanted. But to evaluate the performance of a sitting superintendent is not subject to survey. That's not how we do this. And we renewed Dr. Moran's contracts not the day he was released.
Yeah, I wish, I wish we had an input on that too.
The day he's released, to renew the contract, that's crazy.
Well, I really wish we had a discussion about Dr. Moran as well.
They would suspect us and think we're the enemy. We're not the enemy. We're trying to protect this district. We hired Dr. Glass, the people sitting on this board, almost balls, hired Dr. Glass very specifically in response to the survey we saw a couple of years ago. Very specific goals and aspirations and targets for it. And we evaluated the performance and we felt it was appropriate to renew.
Okay.
And acknowledge that from the outside looking in, it may seem suspect. I recognize that. Tonight discussion, but I guarantee you, that's not what's going on. That's not what's going on. We're deeply attached to this district. Because if we have to figure out a way to find a superintendent next year because of this kind of activity, this district will be in a much worse position. I understand.
Like I said, I've been in this district for 18 years, so I know I would have appreciated to be able to have more input every time a contract is up. Because in the end, it does cost the taxpayer quite a bit of money to keep, to keep, you know, everyone employed. So it would be nice to have input. And going forward, I think the board should really consider that so we can avoid these situations. Okay? All right, thank you.
Hi, thanks. Hi, my name's Tina Russo. I've lived in this town for over 30 years. And I just want to say that I understand what you're saying, sir. However, half of these guys have essentially been fired. And by cutting the line, like if my kid was online for this lunch, you know, in this lunchroom and he cut the line, I'm pretty sure he would go to the detention hall or the principal's office, right? I mean, is that acceptable? So essentially, what you guys did was you cut the line in front of those guys who were just voted in and every taxpayer here. So you'll sit there and you'll say, oh, but we don't get paid for this and, you know, we're elected. But you basically went against what the, what the people in this town wanted. And you cut the line. You did it in a very unethical, wrong way. You shouldn't have done that. It's not fair. And frankly, Dr. Glass, this has nothing to do with even your past performance. If you are so confident in the ability, you should say, hey, I'm just going to do the one year and we'll see where the chips fall. That's it. That's all. Do a good job and everybody will be behind you. Because this is a very small community. Everybody pretty much, and let me tell you something, eyes are going to be all over you guys going forward. You could be pretty sure about that. Not much will get away with, not, not much is going to slide anymore because I think, you know, people are, are definitely paying attention. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Simon Keller, 66 Stratford. To the board, thank you for discharging your duty. You were sworn, you're still in office. Good job. Dr. Glass, I appreciate the work that you did since joining in the entirety of your tenure so far. I think that moving from crisis to crisis has severely hamstrung your ability to actually affect change within the district. And with this renewal, I look forward to moving the district forward into, into what it really could be and quite frankly, what it should be. I think past administrations did it a disservice. But again, I don't think that you've had an opportunity to do those things that really improve our district. So I look forward to, to that in the coming years. As a general comment, since we're doing that, not just to the board, but to everybody who's listening at home as I was until a few moments ago, everybody here. Every legislative session ends when it ends, not when the election happens. The board is sat, they are duly sworn, and they're... The board is sat, they are duly sworn, and they are affecting legal change. They're doing their duty. And I think that it's important, even as we disagree with them, as I have vocally in the past, that we remember that these are people behaving in a legal manner and these are also our neighbors. And ad hominem attacks serve no one. And the types of debate that I heard previously, I assume that most of those people have left. That's what I heard on Zoom, but I wasn't here when they did. That, that type of debate doesn't serve us, doesn't serve the community, and it doesn't serve our kids. And we're all here for that. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Jackie DiMarco, trustee-elect, as I'm sure many of you know. I just want to take a moment because I think part of the message has been a little bit lost in all of this. This is in no way a reflection of how we feel about Dr. Glass. I know, Dr. Glass, I've spoken to you very frequently over the past couple of days and I appreciate you taking the time to speak with me on many issues and many concerns that I've had. And this may very well be typical to renew a contract at the, you know, one year to go mark, and it may have happened many times with Dr. Moran. But it may not have always been such a large election where we had four new people coming in and the community feels very strongly that we be a part of decisions that are going to impact the next couple of years. So it does seem that we're not really gauging the way that the community feels to be doing this at this time before all of us that have been newly elected have had a chance to collaborate with the other board members, which is what we were very excited when we were elected in, to be able to collaborate with everyone. So this feels kind of that we're not having the chance to work with everyone in the way that we hoped on issues that are very important for the district. So I just wanted to make that message clear and that it's not a reflection of Dr. Glass, but a reflection of us being robbed of the opportunity to be a part of making important decisions. Thank you.
All right. I was just wondering if there is going to be a vote, when that would be? And is it for the, you know, everybody in the community?
Do you mean a vote for the, for the, for the extension of the contract? That was part of the personal agenda that was going on tonight.
So that is a done vote?
Correct. It was done tonight.
Okay. What it seemed like.
Next, we have Lori DeLar. She should be able to unmute. Lori, you're able to unmute? Come on. Lori, you're able to unmute? Natalie Glorius, if I can ask you if you can pronounce your name correctly?
Great. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. The pronunciation, you got it right. Thank you. My question was actually unrelated to most of the comments this evening. I was actually just wondering if the board could add to their agenda just about the summer, the summer programs that we're supposed to be offered to the children. We received a survey, if I remember correctly, the survey was back in April sometime. We've read my comments. I've seen a number of emails and newsletters and we don't seem to get any responses to what's going to be happening in all that program for the children that do receive extra support. So I was just wondering if the board had that on their radar, on the agenda during the summer, it's just around the corner.
Be happy to discuss that. Yes, you'll be getting an email tomorrow that is going out so that all the parents will be aware. But yes, that program will be taking place and more details will be coming out tomorrow.
Lori DeLar, we try you another time. Are you with us? Lori? Looks like you're muted yourself. Can you hear us? We cannot hear you. Going to give you about 10 seconds. Sorry, Lori, if we can get you. Do you have any questions?
I see another.
So Maria, can you tell us your last name also? You should be able to. Maria? Can I hear you? All right. Let me try one more time. Maria, are you able to?
Me?
Yep. You've heard it for a moment.
Bravo now.
Ah, we got you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I wanted to know where the ones that are through Zoom allowed to vote?
No, this is, this is a board vote. This is not a public vote.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. Lori, one more shot. One more shot. Lori, you with us? Lori, you should be able to talk. Sorry, Lori, we're not hearing you. We're going to have to move on.
Okay. So that's the end of public comments. Any more hands raised? Haven't given everybody in the audience an opportunity to speak. So like you said, we didn't move on number 10, so we need to approve the future meeting dates. So Vino, can you move 10.1?
I moved 10.1. The approval of the 21-22 Board of Education meeting dates as a patch.
All right. And Joanna, can I get a second? Second? All right. And all, any discussion, comments? All right. All with favor? All right. And now I'm going to turn it over to comments from the Board of Education. Does anybody want to speak? Cheryl?
Thank you. Um, it's come to my attention that there's still a belief or a feeling in the community that the board and the district is not committed to the full return of five days of instruction, in-person instruction in September. So I, I prepared in response to that, a board resolution, and I wanted to read it and enter it into the record. I do have hard copies for people to follow along. Thank you. Resolved that the Board of Education of the East Chester Union Preschool District fully commits to and actively supports the return to five full days of in-person instruction per week for the 2021-22 academic year and directs the administration to take all actions necessary to implement this commitment. This is the rationale section. The, this resolution is consistent with, first, the 2021-22 budget adopted by the board on April 20th and approved by the community on May 18th. Two, previous guidance of the board during the 2020-21 school year to move toward five days of in-person instruction as soon as safely possible, following all state and federal guidance as legally required. And three, developing trends both locally and nationally to loosen restrictions as vaccine rollout and other measures have mitigated the impact of COVID-19 on public health and safety. On May 24th, 2021, Governor Cuomo released a statement affirming that based on the current COVID trajectory, all schools across New York State are set to reopen for full in-person daily learning in 2021. Vaccines are now widely available for all adults and children, 12 and up who want them. And officials are cautiously optimistic that vaccines will be available for younger children before the end of the calendar year. Throughout the 2020-21 school year, the district and board have been investigating and implementing plans to safely enhancing the educational opportunities of all students in hybrid and fully remote educational plans. The action taken with an eye towards safely and successfully reopening for full in-person instruction in the fall include approving a 2021-22 school budget with the primary stated objective of, quote, "fully reopening all schools for the 2021-22 school year" and, quote, "providing significant support structures for returning students." Providing academic support structures for returning students in targeted ways in the approved budget, including a full-time elementary EML teacher. Increased academic intervention services and co-teaching across the district to meet diverse student needs. Investments in technology, including hardware and pedagogical innovation and educational technology facilitators at each building to build and support meaningful pedagogical enhancements using the new technology. Providing social emotional support structures for returning students in targeted ways in the approved budget, including adding two new full-time guidance counselors for grades K-5 and a full-time social worker for grades 6 to 12. Expanding summer programs to help prepare students for the next school year, including programs for students with IUPs not previously eligible for summer school. A new K-5 summer academy for all special education elementary students. And added counseling services for students identified as needing ongoing support. Planning for in-person graduation and moving up ceremonies for all five schools in collaboration with the Board Community Relations Committee building administrators and PTAs. Increasing the hybrid learning plan to four full days of in-person instruction. Offering full student athletics in coordination with Westchester Department of Health and local guidance, as well as district staff and student recommendations and advocacy. Scaling up after-school support and extracurricular opportunities. Advocating for and arranging vaccine clinics for school staff to obtain vaccines in winter 2021 when it was difficult to obtain them in preparation for a safe implementation of increased in-person schooling. Expanding in-person instructional time for elementary special education students throughout first semester. Surveying the community on topics ranging from options for instructional modes, transportation and food service preferences, special education, hybrid pedagogy needs, and student emotional and academic support needs. And holding over 18 public forums from August through April to share information and solicit questions and feedback. Collaborating with the PTA Council and PTA units on many of the above. Collaborating with school districts, superintendents, and school boards in Westchester and Plutton Counties on plans for continued safe reopening. Convening a reopening task force in summer 2020, including administrators, staff, and community members. And offering in-person summer school for special education students in summer 2020. These lists of actions, while not exhaustive, demonstrates the thoughtful scaling up of in-person educational and extracurricular activities during the 2020-21 school year, demonstrates the district and board's shared commitment since the beginning of the COVID crisis to return to five full school days of in-person instruction in September 21, 2021, and provides both momentum and a solid foundation for that successful return. The board will continue to support the district in its ongoing plans for five full days of in-person instruction for the coming school year with the goal of meeting the diverse needs of all community members as equitably and fully as possible in that planning process.
Thank you. Can I get a second? One second, do it. Okay. Any discussion or comment? Sure, Vino.
Thanks for doing this. Wow, didn't think I was going to be at that. What I said when I was not, when I was muted was, thanks for taking the time to prepare this. It was very, very thorough, very thorough and very to the point. Thank you.
Yeah, I really agree. I think it just solidifies the fact that this board is committed to a full reopening for September 2021 and has been all along. Keith?
I just also wanted to mention, I'm also surprised to hear that the community was not aware that this, that these were the plans for next year. It is listed on our, on our adopted budget that the, the school board adopted back in April as our number one goal for next year. And it's also actually in the calendar. I don't know, it may have just been published today or yesterday, but it is, if you look at the school calendar for next year, it's very clear that the plan is for five days in person.
Anyone else? All right. All on table? All right. All right. Anybody else? John?
I have two. Here's my third one. Should I just read the resolution?
Sure.
Whereas Robert Glass and support from other officers and personnel of the Chester Union Preschool District, the school prepared and delivered to the Board of Education a document titled "Considerations for Returning June 9th and June 16th," the Wednesday Considerations document. Whereas Wednesday Considerations document outlines in detail the logistical requirements for the school to hold in-person classes for students on Wednesday, June 9th, 2021, and Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. Whereas with the exception of a limited number of special education students, the school has provided no in-person education to school students on Wednesdays for over a year. Whereas with the exception of a limited number of special education students and remote students, the school has provided substantially no education in person or otherwise to school students on Wednesdays for the entire 2020-2021 full year. Whereas there is no health or safety reason not to hold in-person school on Wednesdays. Whereas it is the school's mission to provide quality education, and whereas Wednesday is a school day, now therefore be a result that the school shall hold in-person classes on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, for all students other than those who have elected remote learning. Be a further resolved that each of Robert Glass and each other officer of the school is hereby authorized and empowered and directed to take such actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effect the foregoing resolution, including without limitation the rescheduling and temporary hiring contemplated in the Wednesday Considerations document and the occurrence of school expenses consistent with the requirements set forth in the Wednesday Considerations document. In each case, as he or she determines to be so necessary or appropriate, such determination can conclusively evidenced by such officers taking or made such action. And be a further resolved that any prior action taken by Robert Glass or any other officer of the school devotes to the fact that such actions taken prior to the date of adoption of the foregoing resolutions... of the foregoing resolutions would have been authorized by the foregoing resolutions, be and the same hereby is authorized, ratified, and approved in all respects, and be it further resolved that the foregoing resolutions shall be filed at the minutes of the June 8th, 2021 meeting of the Board.
Is there a second? Any more seconds? Okay. You have another one you said?
I do. And I also shared these with you all with the Google Docs in case you want to read along. Whereas the New York State Department of Health's interim guidance for in-person instruction at pre-K to grade 12 schools during the COVID-19 public health emergency, as updated June 7th, 2021, provides that, quote, "Students who are unable to medically tolerate a mask, including students where such masks would impair their physical, health, or mental health, are not subject to the required use of a mask," close quote. Whereas the ability of a student to tolerate a mask and whether wearing a mask would impair the physical health or mental health of a student are determinations that must be made on a student-by-student basis, taking into account each student's particular and personal physical and mental health considerations. Whereas the Eastchester Union Preschool District, the school, does not have the resources or expertise to make such determination for each individual student. Whereas such determination for each individual student should be made by such student, such student's parents or guardians, or such student's healthcare provider. Whereas a student, his or her parents or guardians, and/or his or her healthcare provider may reasonably determine that due to the June heat, the lack of air conditioning in certain of the school's facilities, or other considerations, including a student's particular and personal, physical, or mental health considerations, such student is unable to medically tolerate a mask, or wearing a mask would impair such student's physical health or mental health. And whereas it would cause great disruption and confusion to the school, its personnel, and its students, for the school to monitor or confirm whether each student, his or her parents, or guardians, or his or her healthcare provider, has made such a determination. And the school can reasonably rely on each student to follow the determinations made by such student, his or her parents, or guardians, or his or her healthcare provider. Now therefore, be it resolved that no student shall be required to wear a mask on school grounds, including inside school facilities, at any time or in any place that such student, his or her parents, or guardians, or his or her healthcare provider has determined that such student cannot medically tolerate wearing a mask, or wearing a mask would impair such student's physical health or mental health. With respect to any student, this is defined as a no-mask determination. And be it further resolved that any no-mask determination with respect to any student, with respect to any place or time, may be made in the sole and exclusive discretion of such student, his or her parents, or guardians, or his or her healthcare provider. And be it further resolved that any student's failure or refusal to wear a mask, or removal of a mask at any time, in any place, including inside school facilities, shall be deemed conclusive evidence that such student, his or her parents, or guardians, or his or her healthcare provider, has made a no-mask determination with respect to such student, with respect to such place and time, and that the school, its officers, and its personnel may conclusively rely on any such determination. And be it further resolved that no school officer or personnel shall question, challenge, or seek to confirm any student's no-mask determination as made or deemed made by or on behalf of such student. And be it further resolved that each of Robert Glass and each other officer of this school is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to take such actions as may be necessary or appropriate to affect the foregoing resolutions, including without limitation, by posting such notices, making such communications, executing and delivering such documents, instituting and amending, or revoking such school policies, in each case as he or she determines to be so necessary or appropriate. Such determination can conclusively evidenced by such officers taking or made such action. And be it further resolved that any prior action taken by Robert Glass or any other officer of this school that, but the fact that such action was taken prior to the date of adoption of the foregoing resolutions would have been authorized by the foregoing resolutions, be and the same hereby is authorized, ratified, approved in all respects. And be it further resolved that the foregoing resolution shall be filed at the minutes of the June 8th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education of this school.
Is there a second? So you're done? Anybody have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I, I, hold on, I got, I was reading his things, so my Zoom isn't on the screen. Hold on. All right. Uh, I, I just want to give my personal comments on Jonah's resolutions. Uh, I want to thank him for taking the time to do all that research and write them up. He also put a lot of time into those, and that was, uh, that was very thoughtful, and I appreciate that. However, uh, the ma- let's talk about the mask resolution first. This is my opinion, okay, and I'm just stating my opinion. We don't have that much time left in the, in the year, and to implement a resolution at this time with so few days left, and just judging on what happened between last Friday and today at the state level, which confused the world, okay? It's just such a topic that to do anything outside of the guidance, different than all the other school districts are doing, even though I want to do it, I don't think it would be wise. And the reason I don't think it would be wise is because there are kids who come to school and parents who send their kids to school. Some parents are terrified, okay? They won't take their kid into Costco because Costco doesn't require masks anymore, okay? And school has to be a place where everyone feels safe. And if that little group of people that are terrified, and I don't know how big that group is, and I'm not minimizing their feelings or anything, but if it made them feel unsafe, I don't think it would be a wise thing to do. So even though I am all for, you know, the Florida rule, you know, where everybody goes to school five days a week, no masks, uh, I, I just don't think I'm, I'm ready to, to be on board with something like you wrote up, even though I believe in what you wrote. That's, that's on that. The other resolution is, is a very complex issue, and I always try to take my decisions based on risk reward, and I think that so many things have to be done to, and the reward is only sending, being able to send, send kids to school on one day more this year, and, and I don't, I, I think the administration would have to tackle so many problems they would have to do to implement that, just to get that one day, that I think their time is better spent on hiring new teachers and administrators and interviewing, uh, interviewing the vacancies that we have. Uh, I, I think there's so much end of years of planning proms and, and graduation ceremonies and moving up ceremonies. There's so much that goes on in these last couple of weeks of June, that I think to take on an effort like that just for one day, I don't think it's, I don't think the risk reward is there. Now, had we been talking about this in January, I'd be on board completely with it, okay? So I just wanted to say that, and, but more of, more than that, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to do it, even though I didn't support it.
No, nobody was. Jonah?
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up and also thank Jonah and, um, do him, you know, out of respect for, I'm sorry. I wanted to follow up and also thank Jonah, and out of respect for the work he put in, sort of give mine also, you know, add to Vito's, um, explanation and talk about the issues that I saw in the resolutions, um, myself. So I'll start with the first one, um, the Wednesdays. I, in regard to the claim that where, the whereas, um, that the school has provided, with the exception of a limited number of special education students and remote students, the school has provided substantially no instruction in person or otherwise. Um, I would say, I, I see that statement that the district has provided substantially no instruction on Wednesdays to be a fallacy. Um, the district has provided universal asynchronous instruction as well as synchronous instruction for students who exclude, but are not limited to students who have opted for fully remote instruction, as is their right by law, special education students, as are mentioned in the resolution, and other students needing review or extra help. Um, I am concerned that the resolution would harm the educational interests of our most vulnerable students, as well as those who have elected fully remote, as is their right. Um, and the district, the resolution potentially puts us on the edge of a danger of violating Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 because any statewide, district-wide, or school-wide policies that are designed to reduce or limit services for students with disabilities without regard to the individualized needs of those students violates Section 504. Um, the other resolution on masks. Um, again, I just want to thank Jonah for putting forth the resolution that lets us address this frustration in the community with COVID-related regulations in our schools, along with uncertainty about who is accountable for those regulations. In this case, we are bound by state law, as I will explain, and we cannot lawfully override that law to put into effect this resolution, in my view. That's my interpretation, and I'm going to explain it. Um, in addition, I, I also want to say, I anticipate and sincerely hope the regulations regarding mask-wearing and other mitigation measures will be changed soon, but as the governor's statements since yesterday indicate, we're not there yet. I don't agree with all education laws or regulations that affect education, but as a sworn public official, I have a duty to uphold them. Additionally, I certainly understand that many families in the community do not agree with the regulations, and I share their feelings of dissent and frustration. However, until the rules have changed, I believe that we as a Board need to continue to follow the required interactive process in place for medical exemptions, which are mentioned in the resolution, because it's a law, and we have to abide by all laws as provided to keep students safe. Um, with, the resolution says that the Eastchester Union Preschool District does not have the resources or expertise to make such determination for each individual student. In fact, it's the district's legal obligation to make individually advised determinations for each student. In addition, uh, the resolution says that such determination for each individual student should be made by such student, student's parents and guardians, or the student's healthcare provider. Again, in fact, the law requires the district to make such a determination for those limited number of students who cannot medically tolerate a mask through an interactive process that engages the student and family, as well as public health, medical, and school officials. Uh, the resolution says it would cause great disruption and confusion for the school and its personnel to monitor or confirm whether each student, his or her parents, or guardians, or healthcare provider have made such a determination. Again, in fact, the law requires us to make such a determination, and seeing as we have a legal obligation to do it, since we implemented in-person summer school last summer for special education students, and since the return to in-person schooling for students for, uh, selecting it in September of that 2020, the district has engaged in the robust, interactive process required by the American with Disabilities Act and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act to identify those limited number of students who cannot tolerate for any reason the wearing of a mask and to design appropriate accommodations. Regarding mask exemptions, a May 13th, 2021 publication by the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights entitled "Questions and Answers on Civil Rights and School Reopening in the COVID-19 Environment" states, quote, "The CDC recommends that masks be worn at all times by people, by all people in school facilities, including students. CDC notes that a narrow subset of students and others with disabilities might not be able to wear a mask, or cannot safely wear a mask because of their disability. Students with disabilities who cannot wear a mask, or cannot otherwise safely wear a mask in accordance with CDC guidelines, should not be required to wear one. For example, a student with a disability who for reasons related to it could not physically unable, would be physically unable to remove a mask without assistance if breathing became obstructed, should not be able to, should not be required to wear a mask. Students with other types of medical disabilities could also be exempt from wearing a face mask based on factors specific to the student, and schools should rely on CDC guidance in making such determination. For the narrow subset of students with disabilities who because of their disability cannot wear masks, or cannot safely wear a mask, the school must determine whether, it must determine based on student's individual circumstances, whether that student is able to attend school safely, and if, if other prevention strategies can be followed in accordance with CDC guidance." So the interactive process is in place, it's ongoing, so that we may lawfully make these determinations and provide a verified medical exemption authorized by the school district in consultation with families, as well as medical and public health officials. Since we have been doing this throughout the crisis, we clearly have the staff and resources to make such determinations as required by law. I believe we have to guard against precedent. Uh, we, if we don't apply the rules evenly and allow students and their families, um, to unilaterally decide if students exempt from a rule, um, as someone might say, I have a condition, I have diabetes, and I need to have my cellphone on me at all times, uh, for instance, so that I can check my, my blood sugar levels, then we go through that interactive process to figure out if the documentation, um, determines if the cellphone is a reasonable accommodation. We have to apply all these rules evenly. Um, I had some concern about Resolution Number Six. That stated that any prior action taken by Robert Glass or any other officer of the school, that but for the fact that such action was taken prior to the date of adoption of the foregoing resolutions, would have been authorized by the foregoing resolutions, be and the same hereby is authorized, ratified and approved in all respects. Um, I'm not aware, so, parts of the way.
Spoiler alert.
Spoiler alert. I believe it's backdating this, this resolution.
In case he did anything in furtherance of the resolution before the resolution was passed, it's just confirming that it's ratified.
Confirming that it's ratified. So it's ratified for any incidence of, of students not wearing masks.
Well, I, well, I shared the resolution with all of you, uh, just a week ago, so if he had begun implementing it, it would be to ratify it, it would be what he had already done.
That he had already done a week ago?
If he started implementing it, or took steps to start implementing it, it would ratify that.
Okay. So my main concern is that as sworn officials, we have to maintain the spirit of the law to wear masks inside school buildings and take the required mitigating measures for as long as that is the law in New York State to accommodate students who cannot wear masks via the interactive process as required, also by law. Um, I feel that we must comply with the law and rules of New York State, the SEC, as we're sworn to do, regardless of whether or not we like them. I agree with, with, uh, Vito also, that I would, am ready to move on for many of these mitigating, uh, measures, um, but we're obligated to do so by the oath that we took as sworn officers of the district. We cannot willingly and knowingly advance actions or resolutions that violate the law.
Anyone else? Keith?
I just wanted to, to, um, say why I didn't second, uh, the resolutions. First, um, the, the resolution on, on giving one Wednesday of in-person instruction, um, this would deprive hundreds of fully remote high school and middle school students of their opportunity to meet one-on-one with their teachers, and this disruption would occur just before finals, when they need that the most. Some students would have to change teachers, some classes would require substitute teachers, all of those students would be negatively impacted by this disruption. This resolution would also cause a disproportionate negative impact to our students with special needs. Our district has hundreds of students with special needs, special education students, hundreds of English language learners, and many other students with special needs. These students are the most severely impacted by the pandemic's effects on education this year. We must do what we can to minimize the disruption for our most vulnerable students, not activity. This district administration is in the process of hiring personnel to fill key roles in the district, a principal, director of STEM, director of athletics and health education. We need our administrators to focus on the hiring of these important roles. This resolution would redirect their attention away from that crucial work to finding, to finding substitute teachers and monitors for one day. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I forgot the, the mask, um, you know. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I forgot the, the mask. Um, you know, in principle, I would love to see, um, I would love to see something like this resolution in principle. However, over the weekend and, uh, and Monday, so Sunday and Monday, there was a lot of movement, a lot of talking, a lot of information coming from the state. And it had one thing in common, the language that was used. On June 6th of Sunday, the State Education Department sent an email to school superintendent stating, quote, "Schools should continue to operate under their existing procedures until further notice," end quote. On June 6th at 2:19 PM, uh, well, I, I can't quote this, but our, our district attorneys gave guidance to the district that districts do not have the ability to change mask mandates at the present time. On June 7th, multiple emails were sent out by the New York, uh, New York State School Board Association and the New York State Council of Su, uh, School Superintendents that contained a letter written by Dan Fuller, New York's Deputy Secretary of Education. This said, quote, "Masks are still required." It in fact said it twice in that, in that letter. My concern is, the theme I'm seeing are the words required and mandate. I'm not seeing choice, I'm not seeing district level choice, I'm not seeing student level choice. So what I would ask is before we would put forth this resolution to vote on it, that our school district lawyers review it, ensure that it complies with the law or not, and then we can move forward at that point. Thank you.
Good.
I don't really have much to add because my colleagues have done a great job of, of expressing opinions that I share. The one thing I will say for those of you, uh, who are interested, especially in the mask, uh, resolution, is, is that as, as, as Steve, Steve said, you know, we had an opinion from our attorneys that that was not an option, uh, based on the ambiguous directives that came across between Friday and over the weekend. There were some districts, as many we know, that had emergency meetings on Sunday night. There's actually a great YouTube video pretty much of a meeting in Satum, New York, uh, where they had their attorney, not our attorney, it's their attorney, uh, discuss things like the consequences of not fulfilling our obligations as a school board to uphold the law, uh, of the, of the, of the departments that have jurisdiction over us. And the loopholes that they used based on the ambiguities that were provided as of Sunday. Those districts, Satum and Patchup, both had to backpedal their resolutions allowing no masks on Monday. So they're back to wearing masks. I, I don't think it makes sense for us to be in the business of making resolutions or effective because they, they are risk-free, they don't, they're just one of those. That's the only thing I have to add.
Anyone else? All right.
Rob.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I know it's more comment period, but I was actually, I needed to say something before, uh, when Dr. Glass was making his superintendent's presentation. Um, if you don't mind, can I just make a statement? So I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt everyone, uh, and I know it's late. Um, but I, I wanted to just make one statement. Um, and it's, it's related to comments that were made during one of the March, uh, board meetings. Um, at that meeting, um, both Cheryl and Erin had raised questions, uh, during, uh, board comment time about the guidance program. And I answered those questions. I've since had the opportunity to meet with representatives from our counseling department. And we've had some really great discussions about that. And some of the counselors really felt that the statements that were made were, were not supportive. They were misrepresented of the department. They didn't give credit where credit was due. That there was, um, credit given to our former supervisor of guidance for work that they felt was really not representative of what actually took place. And obviously, I am the first person to own if I've made a mistake. And I wanted to, because those comments were made publicly in a board meeting, I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly apologize to our counselors, uh, if they felt that way. If there was anything that they felt was truly misrepresented, I 100% uh, take ownership for that. And know that, um, we are, we had a long discussion about those, those comments and are working to move forward from that in order to really promote the coun, the counseling department to the extent that they really truly deserve. So I just wanted to take that moment to, to own those comments, to formally apologize to them if they felt, uh, uh, in any way, uh, misrepresented or that I was not being supportive of them because truly I am. So I just wanted to say that publicly. So thank you for the, the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. All right, um, can I get a motion to move to executive session? Vito and Judas Sackens and all on paper? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. And the next meeting is June 22nd.